Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, Happy New Year.
Thanks, you too. I'm gonna go turn off that obnoxious light behind me. I'll be right back.
So she's gonna play the guitar?
Okay, that's better.
The bug light's gone.
Yeah, it really is like one of those nasty seventies ones that used to.
That was a lava lamp.
Yeah, it's my husband's choice of light fixture.
Paula. You're muted, Paula.
Sorry. Hi, everybody.
Hello, Happy New Year.
Good evening.
One, two, three, four, five. Conservation?
Conservation Commission?
Nope. My name is Bob. My son. Hey, Bob.
Hello.
We met at the door with the fire trucks.
It's nice to see you in the light. Come see me. Thank you very much.
Oh, good. I think everybody's here.
Is.
Jack here?
Yeah, he's here, the big.
Yes, oh, there he is.
There's Jack. Let's see, how about? George is there and Bill? Bill is there, okay. Did you hear from Noel?
No, I did not. No, I did not.
I think he's the only one missing, so. All right, who may join us yet? It is 6:30, so let's get started. I'll call the meeting to order. We have two items on the agenda tonight. First, I was not here at the last meeting, but the board had found the application for Mr. Roy for the reconstruction of a storage shed to be complete. And tonight we are scheduled for a public hearing on that application. The other item on the agenda is the planning board's discussion about the draft comp plan document that I'd circulated about a week ago. And Matt Nazar is is here from the comp plan committee to also participate in that conversation with us. So we'll do that following the Roy application. So at this point, I will just to to remind everyone, I guess, of the of the content of this application. It was a situation where there was an existing storage shed nonconforming because it did not meet the lake setback, the water body setback. Mr. Roy constructed a new, slightly larger shed in a different location from its previous location closer to the lake and is now before us seeking after the fact approval for that reconstructed shed. I know there was some discussion about the substance of the application at the last meeting, and we'll certainly get into that some more tonight. I don't know if we'll reach a point in the in the discussion where we actually make a decision, I think, for a number of things to talk about before before we get there, but at this point, I'll open the public hearing and I would ask the Roy's to present your application to us. We're we're looking for not only what you want to do, but some detail about distances, sizes, locations, and so forth. I know you presented some of that last time around, but tonight, this is a public hearing. I don't think we have any members of the public in attendance tonight, but there is the opportunity for people to listen in, make comments and so forth. So we like to be sure that we have a complete description of the proposals as we're moving forward. So if we could start with that, Mr. and or Mrs. Roy, whoever is going to to give us the summary, and then we'll proceed from there.
So Paula, you want the summary of of what's happening on the property?
What, 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 what happened and what your proposal is? I think if you could, you know, lay out a summary of beginning with the existing, the old existing shed and then how you how you managed that situation. I understand you demolished the shed and built a new one. If you could explain all of that and provide some detail around it. That's what we're looking for at this point.
Got it. So when we purchased the property, there was an existing accessory building that was located on the property line of my butter. And the, it was a a shed that was six by eight feet in size and we found that it it was not large enough to hold our lawn care equipment. And it was also infested with carbon for ants, so we demolished the existing shed and grew it to eight by 10. And due to the percentage of slope of the property were pretty were pretty limited into where the location was, where the location could be in terms of considerations to with the land use ordinance and EDP regulations, but my my thought process was that if I could make a case for the greatest greatest practical extent that I may be able to acquire variance in the location that was selected, which is, which is moved from on the property line to eight feet from the abutting property line. It was also moved about a foot further from the water than the existing shed was. But all of that is within the permitting setbacks. So the current shed is approximately 70 to 72 feet from the high watermark and is forward of the principal building by approximately 15 feet. And all I had considered the the rest of our property for potential practical locations and I any, any potential option was just not practical based on the percentages slope and the placement of our principal structure. That that's pretty much it in that shot.
Okay. Could you, could you tell us again, the the original shed was how far from the water?
It was approximately 69 to 70 feet from the water.
Okay, so the new shed is is a foot further. Is that what you had said previously?
No, a foot further than the existing building.
Okay. All right. You know, as I mentioned earlier, I was not able to be at the last meeting, so I'm I'm playing a little bit of catch up here. So please pardon me if I ask questions that have already been asked, but my my understanding was that you had previously been advised not to proceed with the shed until the permitting questions had been had been addressed, and I'm I'm a little puzzled about why we're at this point in the process and why the shed exists. If in fact you were advised not to do that, could you talk about that a little bit? I need to understand a little better what happened there?
Sure. So I did talk to Chip at the beginning of October to find out what the the ordinance, how the ordinance read. And again, with the my own thought process that I could see a a variance on the greatest practical extent. There was a that location is not accessible with any amount of snow. And having weathered our first winter there and recognizing our storage needs, there was an opportunity for me to have the shed built. There was a limited window of opportunity, have it built and located where it currently is before the snow came and there was no, and we were left with no storage. So I proceeded forward with the expectation that I would probably be able to get a variance. And obviously, I know now that it's not a a scenario of whether a variance is approved or not, but and I've learned a lot about the the ordinances and the regulations that I didn't know prior to.
Okay, and the board, the board may have some questions for you. I do need to say that I want to be clear that the planning board does not issue variances for anything. That is simply outside the scope of the planning board's jurisdiction. And so what we're talking about here is not a variance, but but conformance to the provisions of the L U O. And I would mention too, just just so that everyone's clear that it is within the planning board's purview, not the applicant's to make determinations about what constitutes greatest practical extent. And we do that routinely with applications that come before us and make determinations on whether structures are located to conform to setbacks to the greatest practical extent. So you know, I just want to be clear that that is not a property owner's responsibility or within your within your purview. That's something that's a decision that the planning board makes. So so we can, we can proceed with the discussion. Are there are there questions at this point that planning board members have for Mr. Roy?
This is Jack. I have a question. On the side that where it shows 15 feet from the residence, that's the property, that's the side setback amount? Is that what that is, 15 feet shown on the site plan?
That's from the abutting property line to our principal structure is 15 feet.
And in that area, let's say, let's say, within 10 feet of your house and that 87 feet. Is there a slope there?
There's not a slope there. And after discussing that location with the the owners of that abutting property, they were not on board with allowing me to encroach on the 20-foot setback. So I disregarded that as an option.
What, what other locations? Were there other locations that you examined on your property for to accommodate the shed?
What was, there was an option, two options that were presented to me from really, I guess, board members of the previous meeting, one being under our deck, which is the 87 feet from the water that you're seeing there. There is a number of openings in the daylight basement of doors and windows, and there's also the way that the deck was originally constructed. There's probably twice as many support posts under there that would be required if it was was constructed properly. So it's kind of a maze of support posts that support the porch and the deck. So I didn't feel that that was a practical location. The other spot that was mentioned was the parking area that that is drawn in on the plot plan there. That's that does allow my wife and I to park there off the road there. And I just I just regarded that as an option because with the slope of the land in that parking area, we can't see our cars when we are in the house. So to me, to have a an accessory building full of tools and equipment would just welcome theft and vandalism and violence onto the road, which is known to occur on occasion. And somebody could just technically pull up to to anything that was parked there. Basically, if that if the accessory building was there, they could pull up to the road and stop, empty the shed and drive off, and we would never know.
Are you saying that, are you saying it's okay to park your cars there, but not your lawnmower?
Pretty much, yeah.
Can you speak a little bit to the area between what appears to be the back of the residence and into the leach field there? So to the right of the parking area, you see over to the left, it says down slope, but does the slope continue all the way up?
It's actually worse at the septic area because they've actually dug into the hill to to place the septic where it is. And then up the hill towards the road is our leach field. So there's more of a slope between the back of the house and where I'm locating the leach field.
When you say 27% to 33% down slope, it it progresses from 27% to 33 as you go left to right, essentially?
As you go from the road to the shoreline.
Okay.
27 to 33% behind, directly behind the house where the septic is. There is a flat spot for the septic tank, and I would say I would definitely say that the slope from the septic tanks, that the septic system up to the leach field is much greater than 33%.
And the parking area itself is certainly flat enough to safely park cars?
Yes.
And you can put a lock on the shed, correct?
We could put a lock on the shed. It's definitely not. It's a wooden structure with a wooden door that's not necessarily fortified, but I'm not sure that it would deter anybody from maintaining it.
The area that's underneath the deck, I thought I saw a car parked there.
So there was a car that was parked in front of the deck. On that side, when you saw that, there is no room for a car under the deck. And the only way to access that is without, if if it's not snow or mud season via the neighboring driveway.
Could you also talk a little bit about the area? Maybe you covered this before, but I'm I'm not, I'm not recalling. Jack had asked about the the area as you're looking at the sketch to the right of the residence where it's 15 feet from the sideline. And you said the neighbor was not amenable to putting the shed on that side. The other side, there is a, it indicates 35 feet. What what's going on in that area?
So that area used to was the original driveway. Part, part of what I hoped could be taken into consideration was the decisions that my wife and I have made to make this property less not conforming and and with consideration to the protection of the water runoff into 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 the lake and so we've our that 35 feet, there used to be our driveway, obviously, with the percentage of slope in the grade of of the lot, we weren't going to be able to use that as a driveway in the winter. So I had paid a professional to to, to, I guess, fix the driveway to per the water runoff plan that was submitted and approved a couple of years back when we were undergoing our initial renovation. And so that that driveway that used to be there is now loaned in for future growth and as a walkway instead of a driveway that comes from our parking parking area down to the door to the principal structure. So probably about three quarters of the driveway that did exist, it had was filled in and with loans and some stone to, number one, slow the runoff down into the lake and to help us be able to get up and down from the parking area.
And do you believe the placement of a small shed and a portion of that area would somehow affect your current use of the area? Or it's not, it's not feasible or?
It would definitely affect, you know, it would definitely cut or it would definitely affect our access down that hill to get into our house. And with the slope of, with the 33% slope, I would have, I'm the way that this shed is right now located. The, I'm gonna call it the roadside of the shed is pretty well on the ground and the water side of the shed is probably about two feet off the ground. So that behind the shed, between the shed and the road, the slope of the land increases. So I would have financially, I would have to undertake a a, an earthworks professional to level off a spot and potentially have a staircase leading up to the the door of the shed, which isn't practical just to access the the things that are in there.
So that 35-foot area has a 33% slope also? Is that what you're saying?
That's, yes. So I'd probably be looking at it once at being six to eight feet up of the ground, whereas the others, the opposite side would be on the ground in order to make it level.
It's, it's very hard to tell from the photos or without visiting the site to to know that answer. I have a couple of very quick questions. Sounds, sounds silly, but just to calibrate. The photos you submitted, is that the new shed or the shed that was existing?
That is the new shed.
That is the new shed, okay. And did you build the shed or did you have it built by somebody else?
I had it built.
Okay, and was it a contractor that built it?
No.
Okay. And and Chip, what did you advise the applicant? Can you just explain your perspective, please, going back to the process? I just want to understand what you told the applicant? What about you? Rather, you advised the applicant as he was learning the L U O?
Well, I had gotten down there because there was cars and trucks parked down there, informed that that wasn't supposed to be. He is kind, he understood that. He said it wouldn't happen again. And this is why you're here, look at this shed. And I'd seen the shed before, and he says, you know, I'd like a bigger one. I said, that's probably not going to be possible. The land use ordinance, where it is, if you tore it down, put up the the same thing, it might be allowed if brought in front of the board. But I'd I'd say you're gonna lose your grandfather. You have a good chance of losing your grandfathering, so you gotta be very careful. I wouldn't suggest moving or expanding this. And he understood that and it went from there.
Okay, and that was before, that was before, Mr. Roy, that was before the you undertook the construction of the shed, right?
Could you repeat that? That was before.
That discussion with Mr. Stevens was before you undertook the construction of the shed?
Yes, yep.
Okay. So you knew, you knew that there was a, there was a process that you needed to follow before you constructed the shed?
I was aware that there was a process, as I mentioned earlier. There, there was some anxiety in preparation for snow, which is nonexistent. And there was a limited opportunity for me to be able to to have adequate storage through the winter. So knowing the lengthy process, I knew that I wouldn't have had an opportunity to wait, I suppose.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I see that there are some potential options. One is, you know, putting the building up top where the parking area and leach field is. Another might be leveling off an area you know, to the side of the residence. We can also diminish the road setback if necessary. That would not, probably would, I'm not sure it would require permission of an abutter. And then there's the side with the 15 feet, which would probably require permission from the abutter to reduce that. So I'm not sure that would work, but it seems like having an engineer such as Elliot there or someone like that look at this with respect to our land use ordinance and give Mr. Roy options would probably be worthwhile because I think it's hard for us here to come up with the options.
And you know, on on that, on that point, one of, one of the things that, you know, I found difficult about reviewing the application was that there really was no there wasn't a full discussion in the application about conformance to the standards and the ordinance to the greatest practical extent. And you know, typically, what we see with this type of application is that there is there is some discussion about that, the application, that Um, there is some discussion about that, the application um that, you know, we know that. Now, all the possible options have been examined and we understand the reasons, uh, if if they are not. Um. If they're not workable, uh, we understand and have a conversation about those reasons, but in this case, there really wasn't. All that much in the application to go on. Um, you know, what we had was the location that had been selected by the applicant. But there really hadn't been any kind of evaluation of other options that might have existed. And um, you know, the other thing I would point out, um, you know, for planning board members as well is that. You know, the the ordinance talks about, um, if there's a non-conforming structure and it is um. Uh, it's replaced or or relocated, it says that it can be, um, you know, it can be reconstructed. Um, uh, with the permit, but it requires um in each case that uh the location is um. To the greatest practical extent in conformance with the requirements of the ordinance. So it, you know, it doesn't necessarily mean you can just rebuild. In the existing location of the non-conforming structure. And and in this particular case, you know, we have the um, um, the added. Complication of the structure being larger and taller than the original. And both of those things um are. Increases in non-conformity, um, which is is prohibited by the ordinance as well.
As well as the provision that says you can't expand. Um, an accessory structure. If it's located closer to the water than the principal structure. This is an expansion. Of an accessory structure. S- so. Unless something changes, it would have to be denied. So I think giving him an opportunity to get. A professional engineer. To look at options consistent with our ordinance might be worthwhile if he wants to do that.
Yeah. Now, I I agree with with Jack, I, you know, given what we have uh before us tonight, I I don't see a path forward to approving this. Um, but you know, we do. Want to give you every possible opportunity to look at the options. And come back um and make um, you know, whatever argument is appropriate with regard to uh. You know, the the locations, the options, whether or not they represent conformity to the greatest practical extent. Um, but you know, I did want to point out that we still have. Uh, the size and the height issue also that are problematic in addition to the location. Um, you know, if it was one of the advantages that I could see with exploring further that thirty-five foot area. To the left-hand side of the residence is that there appears to be some opportunity for you to place that. Um. Entirely in conformance with the. Standards of the ordinance on. Um. I mean, in theory, you know, looking, looking at the paper here, the house, the front of the house is eighty-seven feet back. Um. Um, it seems that. You know, potentially, um. You could conform to the setback requirements in that area. Um. And that's one of the reasons I raised that as a possibility.
So if if I could interject and speak, the the. It would appear on this piece of paper that thirty-five foot um setback from the residence to the property line could be. Considered as an option, um. I it. It really isn't. Um, and I had it. I was under the impression based off of the. Um, the the conclusion of the prior meeting was that there was going to be a. Greatest practical extent review by the board um. To take a look at the property. Um, it doesn't sound like that got done, um, but that would go oh would have gone a long way to paint the full picture. Um.
Well, I mean, you know, the board can certainly um do a site visit and look at the property, but we're, you know, we're not in the position of being able to. You know, to choose the location for you. Um. Um, you know, it really is um. Is your responsibility to put forward a proposal and to uh clearly. Um, explain the options and, you know, the the advantages and the limitations of those options. And so it's, you know, it just is not possible for the board. Uh, to go out and select a location and um and designate that. As as being the best one out there. Although, you know, we we certainly can allow and look at the property. Um, uh, with you, um. You know, when you. Decide. On a particular option as being the one that you want to proceed with. Um. You know, as as Jack mentioned, given what we have here in front of us tonight, you know, I I don't see a way forward with this. Um, that would allow us to approve it. Um, in part because we don't have. Um, the information that I mentioned before about evaluation of of greatest practical extent and those limitations. And um. Now, that that is, um, that's a problem for me anyway.
You know, also, we we couldn't approve it because it increases in non-conformity.
Right. Right.
So. If you want us to go ahead, we'd have to deny it, or you can. Take it back and work with somebody and come up with a different plan.
You know, I I I agree with Jack, I I think it would be to your. Advantage, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Roy to. Uh, to perhaps consult with with uh someone of of your choosing about. Um, potential locations and conformity with the ordinance and the feasibility of of those options. You know, keeping in mind what Jack mentioned about, you know, the increase in non-conformity. And the fact that this uh structure is larger and taller is a is a problem as well, depending on where you wind up locating on the property. And, you know, one thing we could do to accommodate that, if you want to take a a closer look and uh at those options is to. Uh, we could table it. Um. Leave the hearing open, uh, continue the hearing. Um, until you come back with some additional information. Uh, but obviously that that choice is yours about how you'd like to proceed.
Okay. So I do have a question for you, Paula, um, and maybe one of the other board members could also. Um. Could answer the question, but um, the. The review of the options, potential options um to locate an accessory building. Um, if. Um. Who? Who um would be a. Um, a professional that would be able to provide you with a greatest practical extent scenario. Um, that. We could continue this conversation.
Well, there there are a number of um. Uh, consulting companies that regularly come before planning boards and represent applicants with appi- uh, applications of this type. Um. I don't know, um, uh, Chip, I'd ask you, I don't know if the town office has a list of of consulting engineers and other professionals. Um. It's it's um, you know, it's not possible from the planning board to make a specific recommendation because, you know, we would. We would need to have a complete list. I I don't want to recommend one company over another, and I don't have a list, so. Chip.
Yeah, I I keep a list of.
Okay.
Factors that are in. Work well, noble rules and everything. We can't recommend anybody, um, we're not in a position to do that. I can give suggestions. I can give Mr. Roy two, I think, uh, Jack mentioned one, Elliot there, be one I'd suggest. They contacted, there's Joe Stevenson and Wayne. But those are just suggestions, they're not recommendations.
And there's coffin engineering.
Yep.
If if you have, if you have a list, um, Chip, you know, um. Um, perhaps you could provide that to Mr. Roy. I don't know what the list represents, if it's. Uh, consultants that have come before the planning board or if it's broader than that. Um.
Yeah.
But um, perhaps you could just provide the entire list uh to the Roy's.
I think the question's been answered. So a consulting professional would um. Would be able to provide you with an opinion. Um, that. You would. Consider for conversation. Um, in a continued. Meeting?
Um, yes, possibly. Um, we've had, you know, a number of consultants have come before the planning board and have put together. Uh, packages for applicants and some of those packages include discussion about whether or not the proposal. Uh, meets the standards to the greatest practical extent.
One other question.
Sure.
Um, if the. Current. Location um is deemed to be the. The best practical extent, is that something that um? Is. Um. Worthy of approval or is that just completely off? The table?
Well, uh, you know, I I don't think that we've done a. A thorough look um at options and whether or not the option meets the greatest practical extent standard. Um. Assuming for a moment that we decided that where you're proposing it is the best place and um it does meet that standard. We still have the problem of it being larger than the original structure. And so it is increasing the non-conformity. Um, of the structure, so there's still that issue to deal with. You know, we wouldn't be able to approve the bigger, taller structure. Necessarily.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, planning board members, um, other. Questions or comments?
Well, Paula, I'll just say that I I agree with what's been discussed here, um, and I. I think the. The it is problematic that it is larger and so so from that perspective, I don't see how it could go forward in its current location.
I'm in agreement with giving the applicant more time, if you'd like to have an engineer evaluate the situation, but. Um, I think it was a good question that the applicant asked about whether the non-conformity would still be an issue essentially. And it, you know, that's still a hurdle regardless.
I would suggest some. Time limit on the review by the applicant. Um, considering this is an after-the-fact discussion and the structure exists and it's non-conforming and unapproved state. I would suggest that we don't drag this out. I would suggest that the applicant be given thirty days or some timeframe thereof. Um, to to assess. And then we uh we have a discussion and make a decision one way or the other based on, based on that before we get too far along into the. Uh. In its existence.
Yeah. Um. Um. I I don't know, um, you've not considered this option before we raised it tonight, so I don't know what you think about this, um, Mr. Roy, but. Um. Is there some timeframe that you think you would be? Comfortable with, um, you do need to, you know, to identify um a consulting company if that's what you choose to do. And then uh they would need to make some sort of assessment. Um. One option would be to um. You know, require some kind of a um. Progress report back uh within a certain period of time. I'm I'm just, I'm I'm wondering about the feasibility of being able to locate. Engage, contract with a consultant and get the work done, uh, you know, in a thirty-day period. That's that's all I'm thinking about. But he could certainly um. Um, just give us a status update on where he is in the process. Um, and um. Um, perhaps. Um. You know, we could attach a time period to it, um, subject to change if if both parties agree, um. But I've got some reservations about, um. You know. I wouldn't be able to guess how much time that process would take, you know. Um. It, do you, do you? Were you just throwing thirty days out as an example, or do you think that that's doable, Henry, in in thirty days?
It's probably not doable, just because I think you're right, um, but I do think that, um. It it's not like this is an entire house, this is a small accessory building, um, it it's not incredibly complicated. But I I'm leery of dragging out. You know, more than a couple of months just because of its. You know, the applicant seems very willing to to work with the town, the town seems willing to work with the applicant. Um, you know, we're not in a. We're not in a penalty situation, um, but if those situations were to change, then you wouldn't want to drag it out longer because those. Those civil penalties and fines are pretty substantial in this particular case, so um you'd wanna, you'd wanna expedite the act, the review as quickly as possible. But I would say maybe sixty days would be sort of the maximum. I can't imagine it would take longer than that. Um, the only caveat with little asterisks is fortunately, we don't have a lot of snow, but if we had for some reason an enormous amount of snow, uh, it might be, it may be more challenging to see the ground cover and things, so.
Well, what what if we, what if we said, um, you know, that we would um want to see. The proposal back for the board's consideration. Within sixty days, um, unless. Both parties um agree uh to change that deadline for. Some good reason, like, you know, five feet of snow. Um. And that, um, uh, the Roy's would just uh give us a status report in thirty days, I mean, where they are in the process. So we have some sense, um. That uh progress is being made and. And also have a sense of, um, you know, when it might come back to us and how long it's going to take.
It sounds like um that would definitely. Be a good approach, um, I. We can definitely initiate a conversation. Uh, with a professional. Um, and. Um, based on whatever timeframe that. We are given, I. Um. I can provide that sort of progress report to to Chip and or the board. Um, however that should play out, um.
And, you know, I'm I'm not, I'm not thinking about making it a big formal process, um, you know, just, um. Um, you know, just to check in with Chip and he can provide the information to us is all I'm thinking about, you know, in terms of the thirty days. Does. Uh, does that seem an acceptable and workable plan to everyone else?
Yep.
It just sounded clear, so we're doing a progress report within thirty days and then any sort of evaluation needs to be submitted within sixty?
Um. Yeah, with an eye toward the sixty days unless both parties agree to, you know, to bump that out for some good reason.
I'm on board.
I favor that as a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, motion second, further discussion. Okay, I'll take a vote, uh, Don.
Uh, yes.
Jan. Yes, Jack.
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
And Paula, yes. Okay, um. So, um, I had proposed earlier that, um, uh. Perhaps we um table the application, um, leave the hearing open. Um. For the point at which uh the Roy's come back with additional information. And if everyone is amenable to that, um, uh, we need a motion. To that effect.
So moved.
Okay, move by Henry.
Second.
Second by Dawn. Discussion. I'll take a vote, Dawn.
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
And Paula, yes. Okay, anything else? Any other questions, comments, either planning board members or the Roy's? And if not, thank you very much, Mr. and Mrs. Roy, and we'll look forward to. Seeing some additional information from you and. We will come back and have further discussion about this at a later date.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, would you like to move? Appreciate it. Initiate the conversation on the next.
Hey, welcome, Matt. Does everybody know Matt? Perhaps not. For anyone who doesn't know you, Matt, why don't you introduce yourself before we get started?
Sure. I'm Matt Mazur. I am a resident here at sixty-two old Cantil Road. Sit on the cop plans, maybe have been in town for twenty-two years now. I think I'll leave it at that unless anybody wants to know more about. Used to sit on the planning board back in the early two thousands, sat on the select board for one term as well around two thousand six.
So I think it was about a week ago, I had sent out to everyone. A draft document that had been put together by the KB cog. Staff planner who is working with the town on the cop plan. And on. As most of you probably know, the cop plan is the existing cop plan. It has not been updated. Since two thousand nineteen, I think was the date. And so the process that's underway is an update to the cop plan. Which state statute and rules require be periodically updated. I I think the. The rule is about every ten years. We're a little behind on that, but. So anyway, that is the effort that's currently underway and the the cop plan is organized according to subject matter. There is a chapter, for instance, on on housing and natural resources and recreation. One of the. Major chapters is is land use and what you were sent is the piece about future land use. So it's here where there would be discussion about. Policies with regard to land use that the town may want to examine as part of the cop plan revision process. It potentially identifies new issues, new land use issues that the town may want to address in the cop plan. And. So this document is more of a, it's 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 a draft outline. To some extent, it's not how the chapter will look ultimately. But it raises the issues that have either been raised by members of the comprehensive plan committee or members of the public. And it's captured in this in this draft and. Each of the chapters has been reviewed by members of of the comprehensive plan. And many of those chapters have been reviewed by the boards and committees that might have a specific interest in in those. The Conservation Commission, for instance, the Trails Committee. They've all been involved in reviewing various draft chapters of the comprehensive plan and providing input. To the cop plan committee with their questions, their comments, any suggestions for additions or changes and and so forth. And so this is the planning board's opportunity to weigh in on the content of this chapter. And what Matt and I will do following the discussion tonight. Is to compile any comments, questions, and so forth that you have. And we'll bring that back to the to the cop plan committee for further discussion. Which will likely result in some changes to the to the draft document.
And Paula, let me, let me add to that as well, just so that everybody's on the same page with respect to. The the cop plan and what it is, what its function is, how it relates to the land use ordinance that you as a planning board so regularly use. State law requires that communities that want to have zoning. Have a comprehensive plan. That's really the only requirement with respect to a comprehensive plan in the state of Maine. Is if you want to have zoning, there's other advantages as well with respect to scoring and certain grant applications and that sort of thing, but with respect to. The the thing that most communities want to be able to do to be able to regulate land use within their community. You have to have a comprehensive plan and the regulations in your land use ordinance must flow from that plan. So the policies that are in the comprehensive plan and the strategies that are outlined in the plan are the foundation. For your land use ordinance. So this future land use plan. Is the foundation for the land use ordinance itself. So the things that you would find in this future land use section. Are should be in some way either. Implemented over the course of the next ten years or attempted to be implemented and the community may decide, no, we don't like that idea. That's that's okay as well. But that's really the purpose of what we're trying to do this evening is is get a sense from the planning board. Members who spend a great deal of time with the land use ordinance and have a great deal of familiarity with. How those regulations work across the landscape and read. As to how you think those things. What you think it might be with respect to changes in the land use, in the future land use plan of the comprehensive plan. The idea state statute has some guidelines, some requirements with respect to growth in rural areas. I'm sure you're all relatively familiar with that. Growth areas are where most of the growth is supposed to go, rural areas are where. Only some of the growth is supposed to go and you should have. Standards in your ordinances that guide development in that direction. I think it's fairly safe to say, based on the existing land use chapter of the comprehensive plan and the the information that the. Comprehensive Plan Committee has has reviewed, that that actually hasn't been the case over the course of the last decade. The the a land use, the comprehensive plan. And the land use ordinances and the policies of the community have not resulted in most of the developments. In Reed Field occurring in the designated growth areas. Most of the growth has occurred in the designated rural areas. So. That's something that perhaps the planning board might want to discuss with respect to why that occurred and. What you think might be a good ways to address that.
One of the other issues. In addition to the 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 growth issue. That has come up a number of times in the Comprehensive Plan Committee for discussion is. Management of the rural districts. And I mentioned that one specifically because the existing comprehensive plan, the one from two thousand nine. Actually had a strategy in it that we would split the rural district into three sub-districts. So there would be a rural residential, like a rural mixed-use district. And a rural resource district. And the rural resource district is really, you know, that would be the new one and that would be. A designation for areas in town that are rural, but there was some particular reason to afford additional protection. To those areas. And that development opportunities would be limited. To a greater extent than the other rural districts, other, you know, the rural mixed-use district anyway. So that had been proposed previously and was in the existing cop plan, but the. Kind of the lay of the land, the the the. The atmosphere and and the times. Did not. Was not conducive to that that proposal going forward. So it exists in the existing cop plan, but it was never developed into. A, an actual. Rule or the designation of a new zone in the, you know, within the zoning scheme. So that is something that's come up for additional discussion about whether that concept should be carried over into the new plan. So that's. Another piece specifically that planning board members might have some thoughts about.
Paula, then you said that that did come up at one point with planning board discussions a number of years ago. Is that correct?
Um, yeah, I I I think it was, I think it was discussed. Most of the discussion, there was a Conference of Plan Implementation Committee. At the time, and I know there was a fair bit of discussion there. I think that it had been raised at a planning board meeting, you know, years ago, but I don't remember the specific conversation.
And I guess the other question that I would have for planning board members is. You have, I'm I'm sure you all have copies of the existing comprehensive plan and all the maps that are associated with it. My question would be, what do you think of the future land use map? Is is the map right? Do any changes need to be made to that? Is the growth area too large? Is it too small? Are there areas that should be moved in or out of the what the designation that they currently have on that future land use map?
Now, as Matt said, at the time, the growth areas were designated on the maps and. There were several different areas in town. Where growth areas were identified and and expanded a bit. One of the things that I can see in this draft is that. The discussion about commercial growth and residential growth isn't isn't well distinguished, you know, between those two things. And the growth areas, as they were discussed in the context of the old plan. Were primarily targeted toward residential growth. You know, where do we want to see that happen? You know, where could it happen? Where is it most desirable that that happened? So that was principally. The. The focus of the growth discussion.
Certainly, over the course of the last decade, the the planning board has. Experienced some controversial projects. I guess my question would be, do you feel that the? Do you feel that the land use ordinance? Adequately addresses some of those controversial projects? That have been proposed? And if not, what would you, what do you think might be important for? So sort of the the future land use plan, the comprehensive plan to. Say about some of those things that have come up? It's it's challenging in a comprehensive plan because you're definitely supposed to be looking forward. But at the same time, our experience is always. On our historic experience, you know, our past experience. So our. You have to use the past to try and inform some of the future discussions at least. So I guess I'd ask. Where are things going with respect to some of those controversial, those controversial proposals? Do you feel you have the tools that are necessary to address them?
I mean, the most recent one, I think, was the solar farm on Route seventeen. Aside from that, I can't. Think of anything that was. That controversial and that sort of worked out because. Farmland. Land was set aside aside to the farmland trust. And so that was in some ways a good result. But that. But that happened serendipitously, not due to the land ordinance. So I don't know whether that's. Want to deal with, you know, probably more of that's going to happen with rural land. It's also that.
Well, we've also, we've also developed and passed as a town an ordinance related to that, which we did not have at the time that that. Project came about, so. That project would have looked different, probably, well, maybe not, maybe similar, but. I guess I would just say, you know, that was challenging, but it was prior to the ordinance that now exists.
But are you okay with taking rural land like that and using it for our solar farms?
No, well, no, personally, no. I don't think that's a good idea, but. But I think there's, there's, again, I think it's. When we talk about development, I don't think in two thousand and nine and eight, we'd visioned. Utility development in a mass scale in rural Maine in general. And so I think that's. Something that should be addressed in the comprehensive plan as to what this town feels it wants to do. And. I think the town's pretty clear that it wants to maintain its rural character. So I think. No ordinance is currently structured in that favor, but I think it should probably be stated as a mission that that is. You know, that includes things like utility development, wind, solar, cell towers, you know, all those kinds of things that that. Have come up in the past that seem to be. They seem to be the most challenging, Paula, when they come up, when we. When when we sort of, when it's not like a normal application, you know, when it's a. When it's a solar farm or something like that, I was opposed to a residential home or something like this.
Yeah. I mean, some of some of what we've dealt with recently has been controversial and contentious. But it really isn't fodder for the cop plan, I don't think. You know, I I I think as a group, we've identified some changes that we. Could and should make to the land use ordinance to bring greater clarity to address some of the issues that we've dealt with recently. So some things are most appropriately dealt with through ordinance changes. And then others, and maybe the one you're raising, Henry, is one that is appropriate to the cop plan. And what I'm thinking about is that. You know, there has been, as you mentioned, a lot of comment about it being important. As a, you know, as part of the mission statement and 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 a broad goal to maintain Reed Field's. Rural and agricultural character. Rural character in particular and agriculture, you know, is is part of that. And then the challenge becomes how to bring a bit more specificity to the cop plan to make sure that happens, rather than just stating it as a broad goal. And a mission. What are the particular strategies that could be? Included in the cop plan to get us to that point, you know, where, for instance, we don't have a lot of infrastructure being. Developed on farm fields. I mean, how would we go about that?
You could, you could, I don't know, you could. I suppose you could, you know, that concept that you mentioned earlier about rural resource district for rural rural resource designation, you know, you could. You could theoretically designate. Existing agricultural tracks as rural resources and therefore restrict that kind of, or, you know, not restrict, but in the cop plan, you could sort of. Guide things away from that, that that kind of use in those in those areas as we value that as a community, you know, I think that. That is not in the plan now, but I think that's something that's probably, and I think it's valid now because you can also, in that same vein, include. Things about our trail systems that have been developed and other tracks of land that have been developed for rural resource sort of designation. Which did not exist, you know, ten, ten, twelve years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's probably. Fair game to, I think it's probably pretty logical in today's world to include that.
Yeah.
Paula, you you had mentioned that the, on some of the more controversial stuff that count, the the planning board has experienced recently, you've identified some changes in the land use ordinance that. You think would be useful to try and address those. Does the board? Does the board that the co, the existing cop plan or, or the cop plan, the future land use plan that's, that's. You, you got from Paula. Would be adequate to support the proposals you're talking about, since the land use ordinance has to flow from the comprehensive plan.
I think, I think so. It's more sort of clarifications about. Non-conformities and, you know, it's more about clarifying confusing language about setbacks and things like that. I, I think Paul is sort of the primary. Thought I have there. My, my, my other thing that I would mention that seems to be. A trend is that we have a. We seem to have a lot of. Growth or replacement, I would say, it's probably more replacement or growth in shoreline zone. That seems to be a pretty, pretty heavy trend versus say. Focusing on growth in, say, a commercial operation or trying to develop a village or something like that. So. You know, there's definitely, that's not addressed, but that's what we're seeing, I think, is more. More homes, more larger homes, more desire to have a larger home or newer home. And that seems to just be a constant. Constant thing in the last, in the last several years.
Waterfront and abundance is something that Reed Field has, that's for sure.
So do you have specific things in, in, in mind, Henry, that you think would be appropriate to the cop plan? Or, I mean, i- there are certain pieces of the cop plan that. You know, state broad goals and, and broad. Broad strategies for achieving those goals like. You know, make sure that the land use ordinance supports blah, blah, blah. And so then it becomes the. The responsibility of, you know, the planning board in that case. To look at the land use ordinance and make sure that the revisions are made in such a way that the goal is achieved. And. A lot of that, you know, exists in the, in the current plan, and I'm sure that there will be, you know, a fair bit of that in the new plan as well. But to the extent that we can also include anything more specific, rather than just say, you know, evaluate. The land use ordinance to make sure it protects something. If there is more specificity, you know, I always feel like that's, that's better. If there are specific actions that could be taken or specific. Provisions. That should be addressed in the land use ordinance, that's helpful, I think. I don't have the old one right in front of me, but I, I remember a lot of language in the old one that, you know, that basically said, well. The planning board will look at this issue and evaluate it and fix through the land use ordinance.
Right, right.
You know, we can do that anyway with anything.
The loop. So I mean, I think, I think some. I think, for example, things like limiting, limiting subdivisions and, you know. Resource protection areas, whether that's shoreline or resource, whatever we, whatever is designated as a resource protection area, you know, I think. Things like that should be sort of specific goals. I mean, you don't want your shoreline continued to be. Proposed to be subdivided, which is what happens over, you know, decades. So, you know, the town might consider not doing that, therefore to sort of maintain the housing density that sort of currently exists or. Or slow that housing density. Acceleration along the, along those, in those areas. It's not to say you can't do it, it's sort of, you know, maybe there's some way to. Maybe there's some way to sort of limit that or, or have an objective where that's not a, not something you. You don't want to focus on, rather, rather, those should be focused in different parts of the community. You know, I'm just, I mean, to me, to me, that, that lack of specificity in the ordinance and in, and in the. What, not actually in the ordinance, but in the comp plan is. Is, if, if it's possible to put some things in like that, that's great, no different than, say. What we talked about just before about maybe designating. Specific farmland or things like that, or open fields and things as, as. You know, in a rural resource kind of situation or something like that, you know, it doesn't mean you can't do things on those properties. It just means it gets a little more. Attention because it's attached to sort of the, the. The, the greater community's desire, rather than the individual landowner's desire. I'd have to think about it more.
Remember what it says, but. I, I had actually. Drafted many years ago. A definition of what that. That zone was look like and some of the things that you're talking about, Henry. I think that. It would be, it would be. Generally, I'm thinking it would be really useful to try to address some of those. Things like agricultural land and certain shoreline areas and so forth. Under this rural resource district and. So. There's a section in the existing cop plan that talks about rural resource district and. The general description, the lead in says. A rural resource district would be particularly notable in terms of its natural resource characteristics. Deserving of special consideration, such a designation. Would seek to provide special protection to areas, including but not limited to the following. Land in or eligible to be in tree growth. Farmland or other open space programs, significant wildlife habitat, substantial areas of soils rated as prime for agriculture or poor for development. Scenic views, conservation areas and significant acreages of undeveloped land. So although the current cop plan lays that out, we never. Did it, you know, we never designated such a district, but it is a starting point and. So any, you know, any more specific ideas around that would be. Very welcome because I'm certain that we will be talking about that again in the cop plan committee. Matt, did you have other thoughts about that piece?
Well, I guess I'd just say, you know. Honestly, they, the, the. As I said at the beginning of the, the conversation, I think that. It certainly is evident through the existing land use statistics that we've gone over in the cop plan committee over the. Of what's happened in the last decade, thirteen years or so since the last cop plan. That the majority of the growth has occurred out in, in the rural area and the rural residential area. Which is exactly where you don't want the majority of growth to necessarily be happening. So I think the challenge is definitely to try and figure out how to address that. So. We can, the more we, conversation we can have about. About the issue of rural resource area, perhaps your, the minimum lot size that's in here on the old cop plan is eighty thousand square feet. That's a two acre lot and to the average individual who is looking to move into Reed Field, that's just about perfect. I'd love to have two acres. So that, I, I don't know if that's necessarily the best policy to prevent development or direct developments, prevent development in the rural area directed to the growth area. When you're providing the desired product in the rural area. So I don't know, I, I, I'd expect whatever thoughts the, the, the planning board has with respect to that. It's as much a question of what you think might be politically acceptable as it is what you might think would work. You all, you all have lived in the community as long or longer than I have, so. You've got a good sense of what the politics of the community are right now and what might fly and what might not. Or not just now, but over the course of the next five to 10 years.
And it really was the politics of the situation that caused it not to happen, you know. Ten years ago, the rural resource district.
Yeah, I mean, I. I think there's different levers, which is sort of what you're describing, Matt. I think. The resource. A resource protection, a rural resource protection sort of philosophy is one lever. Lot size is another lever, you know, I know housing is a. Concerned as well about, you know, location of growth for housing and, you know, maybe smaller lot sizes in certain parts of the community versus the rural parts could encourage. More dense growth in those particular districts or, you know, things like that are probably. Worth considering. But I think, I think you have to. I think the people who currently live here need to weigh in on. You know, which we're all, we're all part of that group, but. You know, what's important and I think what's important are the aesthetics and the rural nature and the scenic value and the agriculture. And I mean, that's why most of us live here. And the town has reinforced that. Message. Decade after decade after decade. So I don't think the cop plan should have anything that. Greatly changes that, as you said, we have seen growth in, in a different. Sort of in the wrong, you know, not the wrong areas, we've seen growth sort of not. We haven't seen the village areas develop as I think the community would like. I think there's room for improvement there. So I think the town needs to encourage. Growth in those areas and that could be done through some land use changes, could be done through some comp plan goals. So are the future land, is the future land use map correct? I think it's pretty correct. I think it's worth maybe adding the rural resource zone. In more specificity, but beyond that, I don't think there's any major shift in our thought process in that, in that way. How I would read it.
Civilian residential area fully developed or is there open space still?
The what area?
Village residential. Is there space for development?
I think there's substantial space for development, really present.
Yeah, it's a huge area.
Yeah.
And if I remember correctly, I don't have the, the map in front of me. I don't know if you do, Matt, but if I remember correctly, that was. That was one of the districts that we had looked at closely 10 years ago and expanded out the growth areas to include more village residential.
Yep.
And what does that practically mean? For people who want to develop property? And for the planning board? I mean, you want to direct growth to those, to that area, so.
So village and village residential are the areas where your land use ordinance would. From a, from a planning board's perspective, your land use ordinance would have regulations that were more permissive of smaller lots, more density. Yeah, we have better, you know, short, smaller setbacks, those sorts of things.
And, and the problem that we've bumped up against consistently is, is when it comes to identifying, you know, both. Everybody agrees that, you know, most of the growth has happened in the rural districts and. That it's appropriate to try to redirect that growth into the growth areas. But where we consistently come up short is. In identifying specific incentives or disincentives, you know, how do we make that happen? And, you know, the only things that seem to come up over and over are, well, we could have, you know, smaller lot size requirements and, and so forth, but. That alone doesn't take you very far and it's been a struggle, I think, for everybody to. Identify a, you know, a robust set of incentives and disincentives that would actually. Result in some change in the growth pattern.
And we have a different tax. Can we have a different? You know, abatement program or some sort of tax incentive on a, on a municipal level? Matt would know.
Unfortunately, no, you've got tree growth and you can. Programs, so standard state programs, but other than that, no. The, the tax structure is really hemmed in by. The state constitution.
I had a question about, we have this provision for cluster developments, which all the years I've served, I've never seen one. And, and the one time it was brought up was on Balsam Ridge. When they wanted to do more than nine lots. And we said, you have to do it as a cluster development. So then they said, well, we'll do nine lots. We won't. Trigger cluster and so they have nine huge lots. And is that? Is that a good result? You know, I mean, it's open space in a way. But. I wonder whether something could have been done. Or something should be done so in subdivisions. Some percentage of land. Be set aside. As open space, wildlife habitat or whatever. I know the community I grew up in, they had such a provision, like twenty percent of. Land in a subdivision had to be kept as. Open space. And whether you could do things like that, if you want to encourage more density. In the rural residential. Area and more open space.
You certainly can do that. That's, that's a one, one useful strategy.
So, so the thing that struck me reading through this and, you know, it seemed like. A lot of this draft. Chapter, you know, was pulling from. I don't really want to call it boilerplate, but it was some stock language there. You know, so there was references, of course, to, to capital investment, you know, which seems like it's, it's been a non-starter, but I've been trying to think, well, is there. Any way that. You know, we could look at. A capital investment kind of policy and it may be that you, you look at. Some kind of a fee structure such that. You can collect money from. Growth occurring where you don't want it. Through a higher fee mechanism and that you can have some kind of a subsidy, you know, maybe to go towards wastewater treatment, for instance, for. Parcels created in a designated growth area. So it's not, it, it's not capital investment in the way of. The town simply saying, we're going to build a sewer, but it's, it's trying to. Achieve that same end in a way of, of giving these people incentive to go to the place where we want them to go.
Is there a land use term for that, Matt? Don was describing it and I'm thinking, there's a, there's a, there's a term for that, isn't, isn't there? Is it impact fees or?
Well, his impact fee would be sort of where he's going, but I, I, I like the way Don was thinking on that. Yes, it would be an impact fee, but it's a, it's a. Unique use of an impact fee where you take that impact fee and then use it to incentivize growth in the, in the, in the growth area through. Like Don says, something like, you know, assisting with a septic system or something like that.
So it's kind of a Robin Hood impact fee.
A bit. And that's, that's a really interesting way to, that's a really interesting idea. I'm not sure, I, I'd obviously have to have some conversations with a few attorneys to see whether or not that's possible, but I like it.
I mean. Just, it, just enhancing that. Don's thought there, I think. You know, another way to encourage it is, I think, one of the restrictions in the village is that there isn't any sort of. Publicly supported infrastructure that would logically support growth as you do have in some of our neighboring communities. So, for example, there is not a proper septic system for, there's not a proper, there's no wa, public water or community water lines in that purest sense. So, you know, I think, I think in some. In some ways, the community has to invest in, in those areas to develop that infrastructure in order to encourage growth. That's logical. In other words, you're not going to get a restaurant to open if the restaurant can't. You know, operate effectively in that space. And it's not really reasonable for us to expect the restaurant to spend all the money on all of that infrastructure, you know, that is, you know, if the town wants that to occur, whether it's a bakery or a restaurant or whatever it is. I think those things are. Important to invest in as, as a public entity. So the community should have that in a goal as part of the comp plan related to investment in, in public infrastructure in village districts. No different, no different than the sidewalks. I mean, it doesn't specify, it's, it's not that specific though, in the comp plan, it's very vague.
Is there some kind of chip, maybe you remember this, I, I seem to remember some sort of restriction and I don't remember what the origin of it was, but. A restriction on the development of public water. Did I dream that?
Yeah.
Before me, that was. Problem that the cornerstone, yeah, you know.
I mean, there is a small community water system, but I, I was thinking that there was something that limited further development of a public water system. Like in the village. But maybe I'm not remembering that correctly.
From, from what, from, for, for what, from what was your, what was your recollection of why?
I, I don't remember is.
Yeah, the capacity of the well, right, that's why, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but that, but that's just a. That's a, that's a capacity or challenge for the existing infrastructure, but again, you can always uh redevelop the infrastructure in a different. Configuration or different space. To, to explore that anyway as a goal.
Yeah, so that, that would suggest that it wasn't, it wasn't a restriction on the development of additional infrastructure. It was a limitation on the existing infrastructure.
Yeah. Sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say it might be a limitation on the resources as well. I'm not sure what the, uh, what the groundwater resources in the area of the existing well. As, as Henry said, there may be other locations that are, are uh better uh tap into well.
But Maine doesn't have a problem with that many, as, as probably most of you know, but, or more than me, but I mean, there's, it, it's also. Community, community systems are challenging, but they're also not um. You know, it's not impossible to achieve, it just depends on, on how you, how you approach it.
You've got some big ones here in the community, there's one right up at the high school.
But the point is, there's no infrastructure, does, you know, it's things like, you know, building a proper uh. Which we probably need to do anyway, building a proper, uh, you know, septic. Management system or treatment system, uh even a small scale wastewater treatment system for, for uh. You know, for the, for, for the village part of the community in order to, in order to ultimately allow for various uh. You know, small scale commercial development to occur and, and on a reasonable level, you know, right now it's all very difficult. Want to do it all the time, you know, that, that building on the corner, um, care, or that's, you know, it's been through many iterations, but you know. There's several buildings there that don't have the ability to be developed really into what its true potential is logically. And so we end up with sort of these, um, we end up with not what we, what the community ultimately could have in those locations. So we've designated a village district, but it's really not, it's becoming sort of a mixed district, residential and, you know, kind of an odd district.
Other.
And a question, whatever happened to affordable housing?
My question, Jack, is, uh, is are you listening in here? That is literally what Chip just said to me.
Really? We have it in our existing comp plan and uh. You know, it was small lot sizes and stuff like that, but that never really came to much.
There, there is a whole chapter in the new plan as well, or there will be a new chapter on housing. And at a couple of points, I don't know if you remember this or not, Matt, but at a couple of points, um. People had pointed out in the meetings that, you know, there are relationships among some of these chapters. And there definitely is a relationship between the land use chapter and the housing chapter. And that's something that everybody agreed should be revisited.
There is, and I think that, I think that one of the other things that, that the community is going to experience, we certainly need to, uh, we need to. Address the existing law in, uh, in the comprehensive plan, um things uh like. Uh with, you know, the things that passed last year in LD two thousand and three, um at the state level, which uh requires. Increased density uh to be allowed uh in, in parts of the community allows accessory dwelling units uh must be allowed. Um, um, the item that is hot in the legislature this year is uh mobile homes. Uh and mobile home parks, um so if there are changes in state law that obviously Reed Field has to comply with. Will do that, but it's worth talking about those things, I think, um I agree, Jack. What about affordable housing? Because what, what is the, what is the planning board um think with respect to those issues? Do, does, is there anything in the plan, is there anything in the ordinance, anything in the plan that um is hindering? Uh, the, is hindering those issues, the, the development of affordable housing?
I don't know, I mean, land, land here is still pretty cheap. But we don't see it being developed into affordable housing.
Uh Matt, what kinds of things do you have in mind when you, when you talk about provisions in the ordinance that might? Hinder the development of affordable housing or the things that you've seen or are aware of that might occur in. In ordinances that are problematic in that regard, because I, I can't think of anything in Reed Field's ordinance that would, you know.
No, no, I really can't in Reed Field, I can't think of anything that there, that might exist, um that might hinder affordable housing. I wouldn't expect Reed Field to see, um, you know, a large affordable housing project. I would expect to see a, a ten unit or twelve unit or forty unit affordable housing uh project like I get in the city of Augusta. Uh but um. The, the thing that I think Reed Field is more likely to see is uh affordable housing. That takes the form of something like mobile homes. Um but there's nothing in the ordinance that prevents that today, putting a mobile home on a single lot, is that correct?
No, there is in certain districts.
In which districts?
Maybe shoreline, I'm not sure though.
Or land rural residential.
Um that's, that's likely to be something that, um, you know. The, the challenge right now with the mobile home law is that a nineteen seventy six mobile home. Is functionally equivalent under the state statute to a twenty twenty two mobile home. Um, the reality is from a, from a, a, a construction perspective, they're substantially different. Uh but right now, you're, you're not allowed to treat them differently and they can move around, so that's, I think, probably one of the things that communities are. Are uh concerned about, but it's nothing that Reed Field can really address alone, that's a state statute issue.
I mean, yeah, mobile homes are prohibited in many, many districts within Reed Field. Mobile home parks and mobile homes specifically. Page thirty-three. You know, you're not allowed in the village, not allowed in the village residential, not allowed in academic. Uh not allowed in um. Our rural, rural residential. Not all, you know, there's not a, you know, allowed by, by permit or by planning board in a cup, in basically two districts. So, you know, that, that's likely to. That's likely to be a barrier. But then again, you could put up some criteria for mobile homes in some of those other districts if that was a. You know, you wanted more dense growth in those areas.
Yeah.
You could, you could focus the ordinance on development of that. Uh in that area, in the district, rather.
And there certainly are creative ways to try and address some of the issues that I raised uh with respect to the nineteen seventy six. Uh mobile home versus the twenty twenty two mobile home, um we're looking at, at um. In, in Augusta, looking at the idea of uh suggesting that they have to meet um the most recent HUD code. Uh, you know, you, you can have a nineteen seventy six mobile home, fine, go ahead, uh bring it up to the HUD code. The most recent one, as opposed to the one that was in existence in nineteen seventy six. That will likely limit those from moving into town, um and, but, but at the same time, not limit brand new ones, uh new mobile homes. And, and to be honest, new mobile homes are, like I say, substantially different from something that you would have experienced in nineteen seventy six. Um structurally in particular, um the nineteen seventy six mobile home is. Uh, little more than a shed.
Now, why would a developer, why would a developer build ten units of affordable housing in Augusta but not in Reed Field?
Why would a developer do that?
Yeah. The land is cheaper.
Land is cheaper here, uh but the individuals who are looking for those homes typically want to be a little closer to resources, um they have less. Access to transportation. Um, there's all sorts of things that they want to be closer to uh than you are out here in Reed Field. Uh in addition to that, um those ten units of affordable housing that we're seeing constructed or actually, it's usually closer to forty units at a time. Uh they're on public water, public sewer.
Public gas.
They have to have utilities.
Yeah, public water and public is pretty important for developments of those sizes and that, that ends up. From a financial perspective, bringing the, the affordability down, when you can fit more units onto a, a lot. If I can fit forty units onto.